Make sure his mic is turned on again.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Walter.
Here.
Mr. Bonnet.
President.
Mr. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Algar.
Here.
Chairman Yoder.
Here.
I'll present.
All right, next up, we have approval ordinance, and I believe we have quite a few. I think that's all we made one motion, correct? All right, does anybody have any questions on this? I'll take a motion. And move to. Approve ordinance for Tuesday, September 16th, Tuesday, September 16th, regular session. Tuesdays, September 16th, closed session. Tuesdays, September 23rd, budgetary section, Tuesday, September 30th, budgetary session. Section of order, Tuesday, October 7th, closed session, Tuesday, October 7th, budgetary work session, and Tuesday, October 7th. All right, move in support of discussion. Not all favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Chair, seven zero. All right, next up, we have approval of the agenda. Do you have any late additions or deletions? Not, I'll take the motion.
I approve the agenda as presented.
All right, move in support of discussion.
It's just the time you get, you have to move things out, as well.
I can do that when we get to consent agenda. Yeah, discussion. Not all favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Chair, seven zero. All right, next up, we have communications. The first one we have is from our administrator.
Mr. Chair, I don't have anything specifically to communicate most of what's on the question. Primarily at our executive meeting. I'll have some comments regarding IT support services. I have RFP of time that is discussed, but other than that, I don't have any, anything to report to.
Any questions for the administrator? All right, not, we'll move on to our next one, which is eighty-sixth District Court. I think you have the honorable justice here.
Evening. Bob Cooney, Chief Judge for the eighty-sixth District Court. I have with me our administrator, Gwen Taylor. And I know you've had a long day, so we're gonna try to keep it short. So, the, the good news is, we had no new requests for funding or staffing this budget year. So, we're not here to ask for anything, I guess. The second thing I wanted to talk about is just, like a lot of other departments and, and offices with the counties, we've had a difficult time hiring and maintaining staff. So, we've had a lot of turnover. The good news for Lelandaw County is we have a very stable staff at this time. Except, we've brought back our longtime magistrate, Noreen Castes. She is semi-retired, I guess you'd say, at this point. But we had a couple of other folks who took the magistrate job washed out for one reason or another. And so, we've got Noreen, at least until she goes to Florida in January or February. And so, we're working to try to fill that spot. But otherwise, we've got a great staff and working well. And if we can just find a replacement for Noreen, she will appreciate it and, and we'll move on from that. Another thing I wanted to mention is, we had a judicial resources report that came out this year. The Constitution actually requires that every 10 years, the Supreme Court, through its State Court Administrator's Office, prepares such a report to show whether we have sufficient judicial resources in various counties throughout Michigan. And what it showed for the District Court is, we need 3.15 judges. We have 2.0, as you know. And that's a problem, of course. You're all aware that, well, for those of you who, who don't know, Grand Travers and Lelandaw County have been part of the same judicial district since 1968, since they started having District Courts. And in 2000, or around 2000, we added Antrim County in at their request. And at that time, they added a third judge. Around 2015, they took that judge away. And we could have told them back then, that was a problem. But that's what happened. And of course, we all know that all three of those counties, Lelandaw, Grand Travers, and Antrim, have grown since then, outpacing just about every other area of the state. Probably every other of the area of the state. And that trend is expected to continue. So anyhow, for those of you who have been tracking the, what's going on in Antrim County, we have legislation to separate from Antrim County. And that went in back in the spring. And it hasn't moved much, like, like most things in the legislature these days. Of course, they've been busy with the budget bill. But there hasn't been any movement, other than referring the bill to the Judiciary Committee. What that bill would do is, it would separate Antrim entirely into its own district. Their probate judge would take on the District Court function. And that would relieve us of about .5 need for a, for District Court judges. Because Antrim is rated at about .51 judge need for the District Court. We're working on other possible solutions. The last I heard, actually Gwen told me that that legislation isn't anticipated to pass, if it does eventually pass, until the end of 2026. A short-term solution would be an administrative order from the State Court Administrator's Office, appointing the probate judge as the District Court in Antrim. And we're seriously considering whether to move forward with that. Because, well, last time I was in Antrim, we had to schedule a trial out into April, yeah, April. And that is, that, that's not good. We should be scheduling trials no more than 90 days out. And April is just unacceptable. But trying to find another day when we can get away from Grand Travers or Lelandaw County, it's very difficult. So anyhow, that's what's going on with that. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Gwen. She's gonna get into some of the numbers here. Again, we're gonna keep it fairly brief, just hit the highlights for you.
Thank you all for having us for an evening meeting that helps with the judge and be able to, like he said, keep his docket moving and continue to do what we need to do to ensure access to justice for the public and users of the court. So, we appreciate you having us at an evening meeting after a long day already. So, the purpose of this meeting, having us here tonight as well, was to present to you our 2024 annual report. So, that's where a lot of these numbers and this information comes to, comes from. So, next slide, please. The overall function of the eighty-sixth District Court is to ensure justice for all those individuals involved in cases that come before the court. The court has several different divisions, including the Criminal Traffic Division, Probation Division, Civil Division. And also in this presentation, I'll be discussing our budget. Like the judge mentioned, we don't have an increase to our budget request for 2026. So, just kind of recap 2025. And then set forth for you some of our goals and opportunities for 2026, what we see moving forward. Next slide, please. Our staffing plan includes 38 employees, and that includes our judges. And that's spread across to our staff in Antrim, Grand Travers, and Lelandaw Counties. Our staffing and a majority of our staffing is in Antrim County. And that's because that's where a majority of our caseload.
Great, true.
Sorry, Grand Travers. That's where a majority of our caseload is at as well. Judge Cooney and Judge Sepka alternate, traveling to Antrim and Lelandaw on Wednesdays. And they do so on a rotating basis. So, there's a judge in Lelandaw County each Wednesday. It just alternates which judge is here. During their time here, they cover the criminal docket, as well as the civil docket, and take up any probation matters as well. Next slide, please. Our Criminal Division includes any felonies. District Court is known as the busiest court, because all cases in criminal matters originate in District Court. Felony, misdemeanor, traffic, civil offenses. So, the felonies, their first court appearance is the arraignment. And then we move on to, throughout the case, I'm not gonna go into and read all this. You have this in front of you. So, next slide, please. I will talk to you about just some numbers that we have from the past 2020 through 2024. I would note that we have, there's 15 new filings since 2023. And overall, the last three years, we've seen a gradual increase in our felony new filing cases. Next slide, please. For misdemeanor cases, again, you have the numbers from 2020 through 2024. And there was an increase of 28 new filings, new misdemeanor filings since 2023. And over the past couple of years, this, there's been a slight in, increase overall with those misdemeanor new filings. Next slide, please. With our civil. Wait, okay, thank you. Civil infractions, that has actually been a decrease. That's down 179. Civil infraction, new case filings since 2023. And I would note that there has been a gradual decrease over the last three years in those. Next slide, please. Our probation department includes eight full-time probation officers and two full-time probation clerks. I'll note that our probation department is a shared, those are shared positions, which means each county puts in and is responsible for the equivalent of the caseload percentage to fund those positions, that's those staffing in those positions. That helps us with continuous operations of the court, operating in an efficient manner in addressing violations and responding to defendants appropriately and timely as well. So, that's, the shared department helps in those ways. The mission of the District Court Probation Division is to provide quality services to judges, victims, probationers, and the communities of Grand Travers, Antrim, and Lelandaw Counties. The two main purposes of the probation department are to conduct pre-sentence interviews or reports and supervise defendants who are placed on probation. Next slide, please. I'll note that in 2024, our probation department conducted 503 pre-sentence reports. Those reports assist with the judges at the time of sentencing to determine which, how they're going to sentence a defendant, whether it be on probation or jail or a combination of those things. Over the 2024, the general caseload for general probation officers is, has been about 125 defendants on probation each month. It's fluctuated, but on average, I would say, carry a caseload of approximately 125. Specifically, our Lelandaw County caseload, that, there's approximately 80 defendants on probation during a month for Lelandaw County for 2024. That person also carries a partial caseload of Grand Travers County. And that's also to help with efficient court operations and supervision of defendants. Next slide, please. Our specialty courts, they include our sobriety court, our drug court, and our domestic violence court. Judge Cooney presides over our drug court. And Judge Sepka presides over sobriety court. There's two sobriety court probation agents, and they each carry an approximate caseload of 25 to 30 defendants at any one time. And our drug court has averaged about 15 to 20 defendants at any one time in 2024. Our drug court and our sobriety court, they follow a nationally developed model for treatment courts. So, we follow best practices with everything that they do throughout the involvement of the defendant while they're placed on that specialty court probation. It's an intensive probation, so that's why the caseloads are much lower than our general probation. They spend much more time supervising in one-on-one meetings with those defendants on those probation caseloads. Next slide, please. Now move into our civil division. Our civil division is made up of general civil, small claims, and landlord/tenant. Like the judge said, we have a steady and strong staff here in Lelandaw County. That staff consists of a, two office specialists. One is primarily assigned to criminal traffic, and one is primarily assigned to civil. But they are cross-trained and able to help out one another in the event that one is off for one reason or the other. We also have, like the judge said, a part-time magistrate. And I am excited to report that we have some interviews coming up in November for that. So, hopefully, there's a light at the end of that tunnel for magistrate Castes. Next slide, please. Our general civil numbers for 2024, for our general civil case filings. In District Court, the, the court has jurisdiction over disputes involving individuals and businesses, where the amount in controversy is $25,000 or less. So, those, these are the general civil filings. And those are up about 50 from 2023, they're at 290. And there's been a gradual increase over the last three years for our general civil filings. Next slide, please. Our small claims, the plaintiff in a case has the amount of not more than $7,000 to file in a small claims case. And lawyers cannot be present, cannot represent parties in small claims. So, that's unique about that. Also, we have, we use a visiting judge to hear our small claims in Antrim, Grand Travers, and Lelandaw County. There's one Wednesday a month that that happens. And as the judge talked about, just the judicial availability and resources to do that, that's how we've elected to handle these cases and do so in those timely manners to get through efficient and smooth operations for those cases. Next slide, please. Our landlord/tenant, also known as summary proceedings. There was a slight decrease from 2023 in those. And in 2024, just kind of, we've stayed the same, I would say. Or, or close to the same throughout the last several years. Next slide, please. The budget, so our 2025 budget, our overall District Court budget was 4.35 million dollars, broken down in each, each county, like I said, is represented by the caseload percentages for each county. For 2024, Grand Travers was responsible for 70% of the budget. Lelandaw was 12%, and Antrim was 18%. For 2025, and what we're looking at for 2026 is 74% for Grand Travers County. 9% for Lelandaw County and 17% for Antrim County. And that is the same from 2025 to 2026. So, I think that also helps with why we're not requesting a budget increase. Also, Grand Travers County is working to, has asked all departments to go, go to a 2024 budget, what departments had requested in their 2024 budgets. They challenged each department to request that same amount for their 2026 budgets. And we were able to do that for the District Court. One of the things that I think is noteworthy and important to mention is that the District Court strives to be financially responsible with the public funds that we receive to operate our court. And we've done so and been successful in doing what we need to do to continue to the work of the court. As the judge said, if there is a separation with Antrim County, we've talked about it before amongst this board and mentioned it during our inter-county agreement meetings, there would be an increased cost to Lelandaw County if there's a separation of that, because the cost is now spread between two counties opposed to three. So, I think that makes sense to us all. That just estimated cost in, increase to Lelandaw County is approximately $6,000. And that's, that's helpful, because we have these shared positions. So, we're able to continue to operate and work in many of our shared positions. Those also include our court recorders, our misdemeanor bond compliance officer, our office manager, administration staff. Probation Department is a prime, is a, is a big component of that as well. Yes, sir.
Would that mean we would have a judge here more often? Other than once a week?
Most likely, because the separation from Antrim, that is the primary benefit to Grand Travers and Lelandaw, is we just have more judge days to, to offer.
Some benefit to the more cost.
Yeah, being able to schedule, like I talked about earlier, scheduling trials out in April, when you're in October still, is not a good thing. We haven't got, had to go that far out in Lelandaw County yet. But it, it would certainly free up more days for us to be available in the other counties.
Next slide, please. So, our goals and opportunities for 2026, as the judge mentioned, we've had struggle retaining and keeping staff and filling those positions. We do have a deputy court administrator who started about a month ago. And she has been doing a wonderful job is starting that recruitment and getting through hiring process and filling, filling those seats and getting through that process. So, I'm very appreciative of her and the relief in that as well. And so, with that, we need to train our staff. And there's increased training that comes along with new staff. We're fortunate to have a court-certified court program that's offered through the State Court Administrator's Office. So, that's designed for clerks who have one to two years of court experience. And we'll be sending all our newer staff to that training as, as new staff come available, come along and that, that training is offered. So, there is new staff, new probation officer training that's available through the State Court Administrator's Office as well. Those, those trainings are free. However, if there's lodging or travel expenses, that, that's a cost that we do have to incur as a result of that. But it's, it's good training, and it's offered at no cost to the courts, other than those, those things. So, also, in 2026, well, in, let me back up. In 2024, the court completed our transition process to the state-supported case management system, which is called JIS. So, that's fully supported by the State Court Administrator's Office. And we completed that process in October of 2024. With that, that helps position and align the court to move to what's called MY File. That's electronic filing for court users. And that, that MY File project right now is specific to civil filings. And so, we are looking at and in discussions with the State Court Administrator's Office to be put into that rotation and onboarding coming up in 2026. So, that will be a new adventure and hopefully ease of process for, for civil litigants. And that's all I have. Any questions?
I was just wondering, you talked about, you know, hiring hard, finding it hard to hire people. Do you, like, you have reasons, you know, behind that, or do you think that's causing that?
Well, you know, the pandemic, of course, was, something about the pandemic just changed the, everything, it seemed like. We, we used to have people that would hang around for 10, 20, 30 years. And it seemed like all of that changed about that time. But of course, there were tremendous labor shortages in '21, '22, '23. And I think people just found it easier to move jobs. I think wages were somewhat a problem for the county. There were, you'd see the fast food signs up, advertising 17 and even $20 an hour. And frankly, our clerks were starting less than the $20. I think back at that time, it was 18-something. Those wages have gone up significantly. Grand Travers, just so, if you're not aware, Grand Travers is the employer for all court employees, including those in Antrim and Lelandaw. And so, they are impacted by the raises that occur, the cost of living increases in Grand Travers County. And there was about a 12% increase at some point, I think it was in '23, that bumped our wages up, so our clerks are starting, I think, a lot closer to the $20 an hour. That's for a first, you know, first year, new hire. And so, we were much more competitive, I think. That, that has helped. And just tightening of the labor market has made it easier for us to get applicants. For a while there, we were literally, you get a resume in, and you would call them immediately and try to get them in for an interview if they met the basic qualifications. It was that bad. And nowadays, we're getting many applications. It's not the, the dozens or even hundreds we used to get in the old days. But, but we're getting quite a few more. And we're getting people with good experience, good qualifications. We just hired some probation officers, and we were very pleased with the qualifications that we saw. And same thing with the magistrate applicants, we're seeing some really good applicants there. So, things have changed quite a bit.
You have any other questions? Under the judge? All right.
I just want to say, we really appreciate all your support over the years. The last couple of times we were here, we were asking for additional staff and so forth. You've always been very supportive. We really, truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate you holding the mic.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move on to our first public comment. If you have anything agenda specific, if you have any members of the public that wish us to give a public comment. Yes, Lawrence. Excuse me for being slow. Just fine.
My, I'm Lawrence Buncheck. I live in Leland. My comments are related to item four on the agenda. The county's non-union personnel policy, section 12, is clear. When a grievance isn't resolved by the administrator, the Board of Commissioners shall investigate and make its own recommendations. That means the attorney's opinion is advisory, not a substitute for board action. Lawyers refer to that as not dispositive. Yet the reverse has happened. Through leaks to the media, the public was told the administrator was exonerated, even though this board never voted to release the opinion. never voted to release the opinion or to decide the grievance. When one commissioner selectively discloses privileged information, while others stay silent, the result isn't transparency, it's mistrust. Under county policy 1.02, all responses from corporate counsel are kept in the administrator's legal opinion file until the full board authorizes disclosure. That rule exists, so the board acts collectively. Once a commissioner publicly quotes from that opinion, privilege is at least partially waived. And the only credible remedy is to release the full document. The public deserves to know what the board actually reviewed, what questions were asked, whether the investigation fully addressed what are understood to be allegations of verbal harassment, threats, retaliation. All relevant witnesses were interviewed. Anything less leaves employees unprotected and the board vulnerable to charges of secrecy. Tonight, you can correct that. Release the opinion in full, then schedule a separate agenda item to deliberate and vote as your own policy requires. Parenthetically, I might add that I was recently in a meeting with chairman, at which Chairman Yoder and I both attended. And I asked Chairman Yoder about a event that a matter that was considered behind closed doors recently. And Chairman Yoder advised somewhat. I won't say it. At any rate, Chairman Yoder advised that anything that he would say regarding that confidentiality would subject him to arrest, incarceration in the county jail. I don't know if that's factually true, but Chairman Yoder seemed to think so. I wonder how that might apply to the more current circumstance. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? All right. Now move on to official comments. Your comments, Mr. Bunny?
Yeah, I just with with saying that they're holding the line, I would I would recommend that we we look at what the probate judge brought in here in the request that he got. And we didn't really discuss that today. So I think that's very important that we hold the line there as well.
We were all recipients, I think, on the on the email on the FOIA's from from our FOIA director. And and I understand the reason for the email and to clarify, but since I've been associated with county government, documents have been very readily available if if appropriate. I mean, financial documents, other types of documents and I, you know, and I understand there are some documents, especially attorney-client privileged types of things, which shouldn't go off. But I just want our staff to feel comfortable, county staff, releasing documents that are are just purely information. It's easy, you know, to read in an attorney's direction and and take that to the point that maybe maybe doesn't help or maybe a little too far as far as as far as the knowledge that what we have as documents are also the people's documents. I understand some have to be, some some are not available, but I I just want folks within county government to feel okay about if someone wants to come in and look at a document, this a financial document or or something of that nature, please come in and look at it because this is this is your government and and we're not, our intent is to follow the law, but not to make you go through a lot of hoops to get there. So that's fine.
Commission comments? Now we'll move on to consent agenda and also a quick statement here. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one motion without discussion. Any commissioner may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will automatically be respected and will not need a second.
And and what is the the statement from you? The other is the appointment to the candidates.
So number three and number nine?
Yes.
Okay, so number three will be the new number two. And number nine will be the new number three. Any other items?
Move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
All right, we have the local.
Commissioner Russell?
Yes.
Chairman Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Alguayer?
Yes.
Commissioner Bonnet?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Walter?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. Now move on to action item number one, administration. A, we got waiver of conflict. Consent to representation and made housing.
Yes, that would be starting on page two of your next meeting. And it is a routine waiver of the conflict of interest. As you are, as I think you're aware, Cole Stoker Toski also represents on occasion Grand Travers County, don't be preparing an inmate prisoner housing agreement between Grand Travers and Leland. You'd be consenting to have them represent Grand Travers and Leland jointly in that preparation. We've done this before on a couple of other contracts. And administration recommends to do it in this instance as well.
Mr. Russell?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners waive any conflict of interest in office price of board chair to sign the attached waiver of conflict concerning the drafting of the inmate eligible agreement for Grand Travers County.
Second.
All right, some motion support discussion.
I'm going to vote no on this, just because I think it's a very important contract. I think jails are jails and incarceration are often the source of litigation. And I just, I think in something that important on the line that is important that there be separation between the views of of the less he and the lesser, because we have different roles. If we each have the same role in this contract, I'd say that's fine, but we don't. So I would feel myself, I would feel better having a different attorney or have Grand Travers.
Any other discussion? All right, now I'm in favor of that motion, signature by the Senate. I all votes in A.
Thanks.
Grade six one. Right, number B, you have IT support services, RFP, approval vendor.
What I have placed, what you have in your packet is a recommendation to accept it. K R H U Cyber located in Brighton, Michigan to act as our IT vendor. What I also included, it's not in your packet, but is that your included as a as an item for your review was this document. This is the clerk's clerk's tabulation of the bids as they came in just to show how many bids there were and what their what their dollar amounts generate were. I did do quite a lot of study of those those proposals. Both myself, Leanna Wilson, the IT director, Matt Hansor, the emergency management director. And it's our our joint recommendation that you appoint Karu as as our as our IT vendor. The amount you'll see on the three-year contract is $4,424,272. That is somewhat approximately $24,000 some odd dollars less than the budgeted amount of $450,000 over the next three years. We were primarily impressed with Karu Cyber's ability in the security and and they they recommended some very robust security measures for us to take with with our old staff and and the hardware themselves and also some of the some of the actions the staff will act use to access those resources. The thing that I think put it over the top for them was their ability and willingness to pursue grant funding for portions of this. They weren't guaranteed that they would be able to obtain any grants. I did speak to at least one, one of their references specifically Branch County, and they said that they had obtained a significant amount of grant funding for their for their operations, both from MMRMA through through wrap grants and also through a federal program fund cybersecurity nationwide. So those things in mind, we were recommending Karu as the as the as the vendor, as I indicated in the in the EDS, the bids that we had on an annual basis ranging from a high of $627,000 for the highest bid. There were also one for $63,000. I don't know how that came out of 62,000, 63,000, but it was actually 63,606. That bid was rejected primarily because the the vendor did not indicate that they were that their staff was CEGIS certified, which is the criminal justice information system certification. That was the the problem with our current vendor obtaining that certification is the reason that we had to terminate their contracts. We didn't think it was wise, even if even if the price had been appropriate. And we didn't think that it was, we did not believe that they could realistically do all the things that we requested. They actually did not bid or they did not indicate they would do a, they would provide a backup system which we really need. So that would have been added to that that dollar amount. But even if we thought the dollar amount was appropriate, we would not have selected that that vendor because of the uncertainty regarding their CEGIS certification. All the other vendors were much more closer range to the $142,000 that that Karu Cyber was bidding. Most of them were in the were higher and as you'll see on the bid tabulation. And those that were close, we interviewed Karu Cyber and one other, one other vendor based upon those interviews and the RFPs that were submitted, recommend Karu Cyber as the as the successful bidder.
Right, you have a motion? Russell?
I move that the Leland County Board of Commissioners award their network and information technology support services, RFP RFP contract to Karu Cyber in the amount of $424,272 for a three-year agreement pending contract review and approval from legal counsel.
Sir.
Motion supported discussion.
Just reaffirm that although it's a three-year contract, I think it says in here that either party may terminate.
Yes, sir, there's a termination provision. There was not a long-term commitment if we weren't happy, right?
Mr. Bunny?
Yeah, I was just wondering in in here, there's you know, I'm not, the way it's written out, it's hard to figure out what the exact cost is. It's number four here, Kaiser IT Group. It looks like it's $740,000 a year. But it says increases as year 90, annual. I'm not sure what that.
Which one, Kaiser IT Group?
Yes, number four. I mean, I, the rest of them I can kind of figure out.
Yeah, that was that was the the tabulation. That was our estimation that that was that was not inaccurate. I think that was a monthly, as I recall.
Yeah, it doesn't really say. It says set up 19,404. And then it says first year, 19,404.
Yeah, when that when that bid was annualized, it was it was it was higher than the amount of Karu Cyber.
All resting just about, so it's right in the middle, I guess.
Right.
It's good. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Now, I'm in favor of that motion, signature by the Senate. I all votes in A. Grade seven zero. All right, next up, we have consideration of closed session regarding union negotiations.
We need to go into closed session. We wouldn't anticipate taking action after the closed session, so want public to be informed that it would be appropriate to do it now. Will you have legal counsel available by phone if you do go into closed session?
So I can make a motion that we go into closed session.
Second. There's a suggested motion. There's a suggested motion in the EDS regarding going into closed session. It would be appropriate to reference the correct section of the Michigan compiled laws. I'm doing so and specifically could be a lot in the in the discussions. I'd recommend use the motion that suggests.
Sure, I leave it for you.
But yeah.
Motion by Bonnet, I couldn't catch who seconded it. That the Leland County Board of Commissioners enter into closed session to discuss strategy and negotiation for collective bargaining as permitted by NCL 15.268. Parent one, parent C of the administration. Now, this is what was on your EDS, so you have to tell me with Administrator Dyer to be included as well as Chief. Support. We've already got support one.
That's my motion.
That's your motion? Is that the second?
Yeah.
Discussion. Now we'll go ahead with the whole call.
Commissioner Bonnet?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yes.
Commissioner Walter?
Yeah.
Commissioner Russell?
Good.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Alguayer?
Yes.
Seven zero.
Thank you. To the public, hopefully it'll be 15 minutes next, hopefully.
No question.
Oh.
I think I moved down on mine and.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, in motion.
I'll take a motion to.
I make a motion and we move back into regular session.
Second. I'd like to move in support of discussion. Not all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
I'll post in a. Period seven zero. Walter?
I move that we ratify the total tentative agreement reached with the FOPLC. We want dispatch bargaining unit and authorized board chair to sign this successor collective bargaining agreement upon approval as to form by the county attorney.
Second.
Support of discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
I'll post in a. Period seven zero. You. Next up, we is the new number one, first appointment to the Board of County Camisters.
Motion.
And then the number.
Yeah, I think I moved down on mine and. I'm gonna pull.
We didn't have a motion so we can have discussion.
Motion to recommend we on county force appoint Casey Joder, Bridget Hart, to the well on county board of campuses for your term. November first, twenty twenty five through October thirty first, twenty twenty nine.
Second.
Right, in support of discussion.
You know. But both of them and I want you and Casey to know it's 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 nothing to do with confidence and her ability or. Level of honesty, both of those are beyond reproach, but the more I thought about it. And I and I understand the clerk went through the process, went through the legal challenges, the channels and and this is perfectly legal by. By best practice and again, but I in my heart, this does not feel right in that if there are questions about the election. This kind of comes back in spades. I just I I just I just don't think that it's good to have the wife of the chair sit on the board kind of. That's that's my own statement of why and I hope you understand Steve, but I just the more I thought about it, it just didn't feel right. This doesn't feel.
Sure, any other discussion?
I have no problem with it. So I trust. That she is an independent person with her mind who can be trusted. And I don't disqualify people by who they happen to be.
Alright, any other discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post in a.
Aye.
Period six one. Alright, next up, the new item number three, got to release a statement determining client privilege correspondence.
Again, I asked that that come down and.
And can we have a motion for for discussion?
You guys have.
Well, that's. I I I move to the county board commissioners. Ask Chairman Steve Joder to release a statement as discussed in closed session at last week's meeting.
Second.
Or a discussion?
My. I'm gonna vote yes on this and that I I don't, the stuff is fine. My problem is that. We've just torn up our policy throughout this and I don't think that approving a. A recommendation or an opinion from our attorney. Ends the the discussion or the grievance according to our own policy. Policy is pretty clear. The board of commissioners shall investigate the complaint and make recommendations to resolve the complaint. The board's decision on such matters will be final and binding on all others. As a board, we've not authorized the attorney to act on our behalf and investigate the complaint. And approving a strict release of a statement is not the same as making a determination on on complaint. I think it's it's I don't think it it rises, this this action rises to the level. That we are required to perform according to our policy. So that's. That's my statement. I could, I learned at the previous, I think, convenio, I couldn't make that statement unless I had it brought down. So that's why I had it brought down.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
I'll post in a. Period seven zero. Alright, with that, we are on to review financials.
We did have lately, this is an early meeting this month by quite a bit, so we are going to have vendors that'll. Be having to wait until next month. If you have questions about any of these, I did get the answer on Crystal Flash for Commissioner Bunnick and this was. Ninety six point five gallons of fuel for Parks and Rec. Do we do we know if they have a a tank at a park?
It must, I don't know.
Okay.
She find out, let me know.
Okay.
Is this the final thing that's been brought in?
Yes, if if we get the okay to release that check, I think you're onto. Adjustments, you're already on to budget amendments, aren't you? So we're on, we're on claims and accounts right now.
Sorry.
That's okay. Anybody? No? Okay.
Thank you. Excellent. Yes, special reports by staff commissioners and Julia Yates. Reports.
I just wanted to offer some clarification to Commissioner Campbell's concern when it comes to the candidacy and I could discuss it. It's not necessarily based on past practice. It is the statutes that outline it to the Bureau of Elections and what I have to work in. And that's who I check with to verify that this was accepted, that you understand your pieces.
So we have a new. Director Administrator for Beta. And I met with him this morning. He's applying staff to Arizona. He's got a great. It looks like he had a whole lot of fun in the desert. But he grew up in Sheboygan. And so he's really coming home. To this area like a lot of people do. He has. An entire career in transportation, in public transportation. So. I look forward to new input, new ideas. And he looks forward to working with all of us.
Any other special reports?
Here's a question on Beta.
Yeah.
Kind of many details, but is that lawsuit still pending?
It is and I had a request from. The record and I want to talk to our lawyer before or I do so, you can, I will, but. So I don't know what his intentions are with respect to that or if he's aware of the lawsuit.
I haven't heard this in a while, so I didn't.
Right, it is, it is pending.
He's very aware and hoping that we can solidify the one issue from each mission. So, yes, he's all in.
Any other special reports? Alright, if not, we are on to our final public comments in five minutes. Shpowski?
Good evenings. Again, the. Exited committees sessions did not have the. Required. Apology resolutions. Required due to the May eleventh, twenty twenty one. Board of Commissioners. Clerk loading motion. Which was done without a plan, no discussion with the clerk, no need necessity justification or benefit report. That bad decision removed all financial human resources responsibilities immediately from the clerk's office. It's harmed the clerk, financial staff, wasted nearly a million dollars of taxpayers' money and caused chaos among employees in this building still to this day. Unongoing. It has further caused difficulties for the county to prepare proper financial results for one year or more. We respectfully again request that this commission execute the proper apology resolution at its earliest convenience to put this to bed. In order to matter, trying to catch up with all the meetings this commission has and I browsed through the nine thirteen to twenty four, nine thirteen or September thirteenth. Budget session and on page four, discovered a strange conversation about a new finance director coming from. Big Rapids. And I don't know what the context was, the discussions seem to have gone on for some time, unless those minutes are incorrect, but that issue was brought up during that meeting and. I'm confused about why that would be used even as an example with all the turmoil we've had, why that would even be used as an example. And it sort of sets the tone that we're somehow inviting the finance director to depart. With all that kind of discussion and I think we need to have find a better way. If we have a critical and important valued employee, we should find ways that we don't do this kind of foolishness. And put the confidence we have to put in the people we hire so that they can perform properly, but that that conversation just threw me back because I couldn't understand how that could ever be introduced. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Wait.
Good evening, Commissioner, Commissioner, good evening commissioners. I appreciate your time and attention. The last time I addressed this Board of Commissioners, Commissioner Rick Robbins took time to attack me by name and literally pointed his finger at several Republicans in attendance. That breach of decorum was unfortunate, in my opinion, because not only because it was rude, but because it was based on a false impression. I talked to Commissioner Robbins after the meeting and he said he called me out because I had accused him of initiating a freeze in the finance department. He also indicated he took major exception with me siding with the finance director Kathy Hardisfeld against the county administrator Jim Dyer. As he did in his public comments, he indicated that he was unhappy I was engaging in some sort of political vendetta against Mr. Dyer. But after several minutes of candid and pointed debate, Mr. Robbins agreed that I had not made such implications. In fact, the accusation is that he initiated the freeze and that Jim Dyer was in conflict with someone in the finance department was made by another man during his remarks that evening. Subsequent to that Board of Commissioners meeting, I was named in a front page article. In the enterprise, saying that I had defended Kathy Hardisfeld by name during the meeting. There was no way I could have done that because I was not aware that Ms. Hardisfeld had filed grievances against Mr. Dyer. Besides raising the question of how the paper got that erroneous information in the first place, it seems the paper took Commissioner Robbins at his word and then made a few assumptions of their own. Whatever the case, I was falsely and publicly accused and I formally request a public apology from either Commissioner Robbins or Chairman Yoder on behalf of his commissioner. A member of my party, Don Spinnikin apologized to this board after that meeting for breaching protocol after being provoked by Commissioner Robbins accusations. I hope the members of this board will match his courtesy. Next, I would like to address the issue of grievances being filed in the county government center. My understanding is that although only one grievance has been reported in the papers, there are several others. If that is true, what's unfolding is that one grievance is a pattern of behavior and a test of how this board handles it. I have been told that two county employees have filed complaints alleging verbal assault threats and retaliation. Instead of concern for those affected, the louder outrage has been over leaks. This signals that protecting the administrator matters more than protecting employees, but Mr. Dyer's own words confirm the problem. In the ticker, he said that once he makes a decision, he expects his staff to quote, "support that when we come to the board." And that when they don't, quote, "there are potential consequences," unquote. In my opinion, that isn't collaboration, it's intimidation reinforcing exactly what the grievance is described. Accurate financial reporting and honest advice are duties to the board and the public, not acts of disloyalty to an administrator. Commissioner Rick Robbins then told the ticker that attorney's investigation exonerated Mr. Dyer, even though the board never voted to release that privileged opinion. Under county policy one point zero two, council's responses must remain in the administrator's legal opinion file until the full board authorizes disclosure. When one commissioner publicly disclosed quotes the conclusion, that statement functions as a partial waiver of privilege. The board, the board should therefore release the full opinion or at least a minimum, at a minimum, a redacted version reviewed by council, so the public can see the complete picture. A new independent development strengthens my concerns. I understand that a professional candidate who was offered a county position declined the offer and sent outside correspondents expressing concern about Mr. Dyer's management approach and approach and his temperament. If verified through opinion FOIA. That would independently corroborate the same pattern employees have described. I have warned this board previously several times and now we apparently have evidence showing that an unbiased outsider has perceived similar warning signs. has perceived similar warning signs. Based on these new developments, I repeat my warning that you are handling this situation poorly and potentially exposing this county to legal liability. Meanwhile, local press coverage in both the ticker and The Enterprise rushed to declare Mr. Dyer, quote, "exonerated," unquote, overlooking the seriousness of the complaint and the breach of privilege. This isn't ballots reporting, it's a public relations campaign. Your responsibility is clear. Conduct your own investigation under the non-union personnel policy. Interview those affected and determine whether any state or federal workplace protection laws are violated. During that process, standard practice would place Mr. Dyer on paid administrative leave so witnesses feel safe. Transparency and integrity are not optional. They're the foundation of public trust, and the employees of Leland County and the voters who placed you here deserve proof that accountability still matters in this building. Thank you.
Kate actually had her.
Kathy Dawkins, Leland Township. And I thought that when people come up here and make public comment, they're supposed to introduce themselves and where they're from. So I just missed this person who was before me, who he was and where he's from. The other thing is, I wasn't going to make any more public comments today, but I came late to the party. I don't know what this previous public comment was all about, but I heard several things that concerned me. I've worked in government for over 37 years. If I had a grievance against somebody, I would not want public comment to be made in front of the board if I was not involved in that comment. I feel that's a breach of confidentiality. I don't know where this person is getting that information. Unless those people who have made the grievances gave him permission to come up here and make public comment about their personal business. I think it's highly inappropriate. And if I were a person who had made a grievance against someone, I would be very unhappy with somebody coming up here and talking about my own business without conducting a conversation with me first, or maybe going into a private conversation with the people that were involved in this. But unless this person was part of that grievance, they have no right to be up here talking about it. And I guess that's about all I can say. And there was something else that came up that I felt was inappropriate, but I was, I was so upset about this grievance thing that it put that other thing out of my mind. Anyway, thank you.
Hi, Kate Gall at Cleveland Township. First, I just wanted to take a moment to honor Indigenous Peoples' Day, which was recognized yesterday. Many know it as Columbus Day. There was a wonderful celebration in Leland, which they said had the most attendees. And members of the tribe spoke about their history and where they're at today, and I thought it was really beautiful to have this day that recognizes the first people of the land, the Anishnaabie Nation, including the Ottawa, Ojibwe, and Potawatomi, whose presence, language, and stewardship continue to shape our region and Michigan. And second, I wanted to say thank you for your work on the budgeting. I know that can be difficult. Yesterday, we heard from our state rep, Betsy Kofia, and I just wanted to mention that you know, our representatives in this area are really fighting for services for the rural services to stay in our state budget, and that affects all sorts of things that our citizens depend on. And also, I'm someone who is a ballot petition circulator, so I just wanted to give some information on that that you might see around. So one of them that I'm collecting for is Invest in My Kids, which strengthens and protects funding for Michigan Public Schools. I'm collecting signatures for ranked choice voting, so it's a form of instant runoff voting, which gives more voice and to people that are electing and a majority. I'm also collecting for Michiganders for Money Out of Politics, which would limit the influence of dark money. People would have to say in their issue ads where it's coming from, and it would prohibit regulated utilities and government contractors with contracts over 250,000 from donating to candidates in elections where there's a conflict of interest. So hopefully that would make our elections more transparent and also help people's utility bills in Michigan. And I also, yesterday, actually someone was bragging to me about signing a ballot proposal called Ask My Tax, which you've heard about here. But I'm very concerned about that. I see a lot of signs up about that. That is to eliminate all property taxes in Michigan. And that's the financial backbone of our community. I pay property taxes and I'm very happy for my taxes to fund services I care about, our public schools, road maintenance, many of the things that you're determining in our budget here. So I just think that it's important that we know about it and we can talk to people about why that might be challenging to meet the needs of our community if that went through. And you're always welcome to decline design. Those are the main ones I wanted to mention. Thank you so much.
Any other public comment?
Bill Weisner. Bill Weisner, Elwood Township. And the only way we can trust the elections or any ballot proposals, anything, is for no fraud, is one person, one ballot, one vote, one day. Very simple. Everybody gets along. There's no question. Have cameras, have two Democrats, two Republicans. We all have a good day and we count the votes. And the handout that I gave tonight is three things. Michelle Crocker's comments last week at the budget session regarding elections. Ty Wessel, after the meeting, we had a short conversation last week, and the stolen elections handout in this book. So starting with Michelle Crocker's comments, basically, the only point I want to make is the elections. Okay. All right. Okay. Oh, I know where this. Okay, it's right here. First of all, the cost of the elections. You were mentioning the cost. Linda Rantz, I've given that presentation here. And you could save a lot of money doing hand-counted paper ballots. It's just, and they hide a lot of the costs, the hidden costs with the machine ballots. So that's one thing. And paper ballots, we've got, if, if it was paper ballots, hand-counted, no machines, we would have over 50% of all potential voters, all the Democrats would volunteer their time. There's no, not going to be any trouble with getting people to volunteer. It's been successful, I believe, in Missouri and Arkansas and small counties, and it's been fought all the way. But they haven't successfully done it there. And Shasta County, California wants to do this. And, and they're in California, and Dallas County. They're the ninth largest county in the United States. They've just decided to go ahead with paper ballots, hand-counted. So we could do it in our small county if they can do it in Dallas County. They can save money on it in Dallas County. Why can't we? And why shouldn't we save money on it in our county? It's much less expensive. It's much more amicable. There's no fighting saying the election was stolen because it's all transparent. Two Democrats, two Republicans, camera, and they're all counted basically the same night. And why are we fighting so much against this? So moving on to where I talked to Ty, it graciously came up and said, "Bill, I'll always listen to what you say, but I disagree." And I spoke up afterwards. Wait a second. I presented a whole lot of evidence. We, we saw all the machines stop in all seven swing states at the same time in the 2020 election? How does that happen? You know, a convenient bathroom difficulty and the, and the suitcases coming out of the machines in, in Georgia? I mean, there's evidence everywhere. In Dominion voting machines, don't worry about that Trump getting elected. I made F-ing sure that's not going to happen. There's just, so it's not good enough to say I disagree. How about address? Look at my website, tcfamily.org, and the elections one is 48 pages right on the top of the page. And it's got 12 pages from this book, this guy. That Gary Bernstein, talking about this book, "The Story of a Complex and Vicious Attack on the Underpinnings of American and Global Democracy." Stolen Elections Needs to Be Read by All Who Value Freedom. I would suggest, you guys value freedom. Read it on my website. It's all right there in 12 pages. It's much more, it's up to date more here, but it's the same story. All the clerks should be reading this. We can't just accept, "I disagree." Show us where you disagree specifically on all these. And 2,500 of the counties went for Trump and 500 went to Biden. Biden got 81, 81 million votes? It's not happening. We need paper ballots, hand-counted. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right. If not, we'll move on to.
Yeah, sometimes we have people making public comments that have questions about the administrator or are ill-informed. Do you, do you make your phone number publicly? And would you welcome calls from public if they had questions?
I would, and I take those calls frequently. My phone number is on the website. I don't know what the cell phone number is, but it's on my business.
Thank you.
And it's on my, it's also on my signature block of annual reports.
Thank you. Well, when I was a little kid, my mom told me there's two sides to the story. And then there's three sides, the real side. Mr. White, I do remember that incident very well. And I remember that night, there was a lot of red shirts in the audience. And yes, I did get confused. It was another member of your unit that misspoke about me. It was not you. What I really remember is a lobby is you grabbed me and I grabbed you, and we went in the bathroom. And we apologized to you in the bathroom. And we laughed and we talked. But instead, yeah, the third part of the story is, there's your version, my version. The only guy or person that knows that what was really said was the guy in the stall, but you'd figure out who issues are, we'd get your own story. So I did apologize to you.
All right. Any other special comments?
I'm, I totally support and enjoy comments about what people envision for the good of the people we want to. And I think that's our bottom line job. Is to watch your tax dollar. And at the same time, do what we can to improve the lives of everyone here. And I hope that we can be more positive and focus on the purpose here. And stop talking about people's personal vendettas. It's been going on for years and it's very old news, and it does no good for anyone. Let's talk about where we want to go as a county. How we can improve all of our lives together. And I totally enjoy those comments and look forward to it.
Any other special comments? Not, I'm gonna, part of the motion that was made tonight is was to release a statement regarding the attorney client privilege correspondence, and I will read that into the record tonight, just being that it got approved by the board tonight. So press release states, "An investigation was recently conducted into an allegation by a county employee that the county administrator violated county policy. After a thorough investigation, it was determined that a violation of county policy did not occur, and the Board of Commissioners considers this matter closed. The Board of Commissioners seeks to protect the integrity of the investigative process and maintain confidentiality as it relates to internal personnel matters to the extent possible. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners declines to provide additional details regarding the specifics of the underlying investigation." That's a statement that will be, that you guys authorize to approve. So a statement. That's, we are moving on to the rule of amendments.
So amendments and transfers today on your dais, you had Budget Amendment Number 25012, 25013, and Fund Transfer Number 2506. If you have questions or a motion?
Question about the point broadband. Is there one more payment or will this one we pay now?
We have four cabinets outstanding.
Okay.
I'm waiting for the okay to release the check.
We need to do the budget amendment, but we have yet to receive, we've got vast amount of information that we've asked them to demonstrate that they've done the best we can to. The last piece of the puzzle that I've asked them to provide is a narrative. I mean, one of the documents we got was, I don't know, 200 pages worth of reports regarding their activity. And rather than just simply looking at that and saying, "Yeah, that looks like a, that looks like a sizable document. You must have done what you said you did." We wanted, we asked them to provide a narrative explaining what it was that they did in simple language that you can review and, and, and basically approve that final payment. We believe it's contractually required that they do so, and they've agreed to provide it. We just haven't got it done. And we were going to defer the payment until such time as we're satisfied that it's good to see. Actually, we would like to review it before we approve payment.
Yeah, we moved that we approve Amendments 25012, 2503, and Transfer, also Transfer 25006.
For, for discussion? Not, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, sitting aye.
Claims and accounts lately?
To approve claims and accounts for 213, I'm sorry, $231,541.27.
Moving, supported, discussion? Not, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, sitting aye.
Post-it.
I made a motion that we approve post-odd $6,819,808.34. Word?
All right. Moving, supported, discussion? Not, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All opposed, sitting aye. Period, 7-0. That, we're done.